Okay, welcome to the budget meeting, May 20th. Tonight we'll be discussing public works, municipal garage, solid waste, buildings and grounds, non-departmental utilities, and municipal building. You have a question?
No, sorry, don't.
Okay. First up is public works, since we do not have a public works director at this time, town manager Sule Sad will be explaining that.
Good evening, welcome. The public works budget this year reflects one less person than it did for half of last year. If you remember, we reduced staffing by one full-time, but that occurred mid-year, and so the residual savings from the other half of that person are reflected in this budget. And the budget, as I said, is at the present time, you have a new director coming on hand on June 8th, which infrastructure and the council have discussed, allowing him some time to evaluate the operation and make recommendations, if any, for changes. Maintaining the budget with the current number of people in it allows him to do that. If you make changes down the road, there's, the money doesn't go anywhere, it just goes to fund balance and gets re-appropriated if you don't spend it all. But the wages include 11 full-time employees, two part-time, and the part-time are not part-time, less than forty, they're part of the year employees. One is the sidewalk plow driver, and another is the person who shovels out the doorways of all the buildings and keeps those kind of things clear as well. The total salary is at 563, is, reflects the other half of that position that's no longer there. Yes, Carol? The sheets that were the backup came from the prior public works director. I thought I caught all of the stuff, but I went by actual people that we employ and what their pay rates are, and I have those, that breakout for all of you that explains the wages in public works, the transfer station, and building and grounds, and how it, how we came to arrive at it. But one part-time is the, but there is more than one part-time. There's, when I say part-time, works less than 52 weeks a year. The trackless driver is one, and the shovel-er is another. That's correct. This is, that's the same. I'll pass these down if you want to look at what the rates are for all the employees. I have contacted or sent an email to the city of Brewer, if you remember, last year. We went with Bangor and Brewer on a salt price, and were able to do pretty well. I've asked for an update on that, and if we can continue to do that, which is the reason that I've left the, the salt price the same. And the, there is $75,000 out of, out of this operating budget that then gets put into your paving funds for next, along with a hundred thousand that was put in from reserve to add 175,000 total to that, from taxation, some from reserve, and from, some from the operating budget. I have bumped up a couple of thousand dollars, the equipments maintenance line item, and the reason for that is that there's no funds in this year for replacement of vehicles. As vehicles get older, they may require more in the way of repairs. This past winter, because of the intensity of basically what turned into a five-week or six-week intense winters, really harder on, harder on equipment than if you spread that out over time. But the, the bottom line cost because of changes to health insurance, the change in, the reduction of a full-time person, this year's budget for public works is $60,000 less than last year's budget, as proposed.
Sue, unexpended about 15,000 on workers' comp, is that a timing issue?
There's a 15,000, or $15,000 that's been expended under workers' comp. Is that a timing issue?
It's a timing for when we get the bills issue.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I had a question on culverts.
Yes.
Do you think that $3,000 is going to be enough?
For general culverts, yes. For, for culvert repair, for example, like the one on Old County, are those more major repairs?
That's going to be different.
That's a different.
The prior year, we went way over, so I'm just wondering if...
The prior year, some things that were not culverts were reflected in that line item.
Okay.
Dennis? Counselor Marble?
Who am I? I'll try to go through these fast, because this is a little bit of my learning curve at your expense. What is tree removal? Is that looking at lines and removing trees, or?
There are trees in the public right-of-way that are a hazard or have been damaged to the point where they need to be removed.
Okay, all right. Culverts was already hit, and I know you just referenced it and talked about having more money, I think you said, for next year, but I was wondering, going through this, what's the difference between the line resurfacing roads and the line four below it for street construction?
Street construction is, are small projects that the, the town may, may do on its own, such as replacing culverts or ditching a certain section of road, putting in under-drain in some places. Small place, is small projects, and I say small because they're, they don't rise to the level that we put them out to bid, but the, the $19,500 reflects $12,000 towards culvert, more major culvert replacement work, and, give me one minute, and I'll find the other one. Well, in the other words, listed as high maintenance, which may end up being anything from replacing a culvert that's impacted, ditching on a particular road right on down, but the, it's not, the resurfacing roads is paving, this is more construction.
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking of previous conversations, mayor's comments and others and staff, about where we may be headed in discussions with the new director, and I'm thinking there's a possibility, some of these lines in future years may change and reflect mission change in the department. So I was just trying to get clear on what the difference was in the two.
That's...
And then you've got a rental line right above street construction, is that on specific equipment?
That is, street sweeping, which is 3,500 or so dollars a year, and the final payment on the lease purchase John Deere tractor, with the loader that the town had purchased, that last payment on that loader's there.
So it was specific, equipment-specific?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor McAvoy?
The line in here for vehicle expense?
The vehicle expense line item has been budgeted annually to reimburse the public works director for use of his personal vehicle when going around checking roads or going to projects or doing that kind of thing. The, I left that in there. The council has the option of having the director use one of the town's pickups, or more likely, one of the cars that's been moved off from public safety to do that, but that's what that is. It's a mileage reimbursement account.
Right, I, I think I prefer the latter. I mean, we've got plenty of vehicles that, that the town already has that they could use for that, so I just think it's unnecessary. I mean, if it's for being, for conducting town business and whatnot, why not go out and ride around in a town vehicle? So...
I, I don't disagree, I'm just, I'm wondering if there's a, a way to do this that includes the new director, and may, I don't, it doesn't work with the timing of the budget, but to let him come in and give his opinion after a couple of months as well, not to make the final decision, we can do that, but to be inclusive in the process.
I think if we just leave it the way it is, and then when the new director comes on board, like you say, and he knows our feelings, and he can make the adjustments at the town garage, vehicle-wise, as to who does what, uses what, and I think that'll eliminate some of your issues, Terry.
I have no problem with that, I mean, you know, I'm guessing he's going to have...
And if it doesn't get used, it'll go back in anyway, so we're not really losing it.
He, he can drive around the one that doesn't have the town sticker on it already.
Ouch. Any other questions? Okay, seeing no more questions.
I was gonna, I should just compliment you on the knowledge you have in a department that's not necessarily a personal department, thank you.
Well, I will tell you that normally, I prepare the administration budgets and the town council budgets and debt service and those related types, but I do not normally prepare public works, transfer station, building and grounds, so it took a bit longer than normal to figure out what was what, but we'll get there.
Next item up is the municipal garage.
The town garage has electric, fuel, building maintenance, and the electric has gone up because some of the electricity that is tied into that goes to the Packer, and that's a more expensive than it was in prior years, the Packer for the zero sort.
I was going to say, we added one.
We added one, so that, that's an increase. Fuel is a decrease because I was able to save 75 cents a gallon on propane for the coming year over what we had budgeted for it last year, so that was good. And then building maintenance are, are the costs of any kind of repairs that are needed at the town garage, as well as pumping out the underground tanks that are under the bays that we have to dispose of that material, anything that runs off the truck into those, into that tank has to be pumped out and appropriately disposed of so that we don't get in trouble with environmental regulations.
Counselor Lyle?
On the building maintenance, you quoted two different things there. The building maintenance, what percentage of that 11,000 goes to actual building maintenance versus the removal of the bio, or the, not even bio, but hazardous waste, I guess is what you would call it?
Probably 60, 40, about 40% of the cost is, is, goes to maintaining the drainage systems that we...
Okay. And we always spend 11,000 about, per year for both of those?
Sometimes a little more, depending on if some, if, if someone hits, or something happens to one of the bay doors, for example, one of the garage bay doors, and it isn't where somebody backed into it or ran over it so that we can file an insurance claim on it, it just doesn't work. Those kind of repairs can get pricey all of a sudden, that's, it's those kind of things.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McAvoy?
On the cost of the electricity, you said the, the reason it's higher is because of the zero sort Packer that went in? So this is the only discernible difference in cost to us, and the, but the benefit from zero sort has been literally tens of thousands of dollars, right? I mean...
If you look at the solid waste removal budget, we're not there yet, but under transfer station, it, that portion is $15,000 lower than it was last year. Some of that has to do with...
So it costs us a thousand bucks to save 15, cool, I like that.
Counselor Shakespeare?
Sue, have we converted the lighting in the garage to energy efficient completely, or are they still working on that?
They're still working, I, okay, right now, nobody's working on it. I don't have a director in charge of moving that forward, but that would be a project that they would need.
How far did we get? I mean, did, how far did we get, just miniscule pieces, you know?
I, I think small pieces, but, but certainly not sufficient to call it.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to think that the efficiency of going to, I don't know, where they, they weren't going to LED, they were just going to electronic lighting compared to the type of lighting that was in the, the T12s in the old Ballast, which I noticed, but electricity has gone up that much because of that Packer, over a hundred dollars a month? You've actually seen the bill enough?
It's a, that's a big electric user.
It's a big noise producer, too, when it's used.
They don't charge me for the noise, but the electricity thing, they do, and it is, it's been a substantial increase.
Yeah.
In that, in that line item.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to solid waste.
Solid waste, this budget is for two full-time people at the transfer station, and what happens when one of them is on vacation or something like that, somebody from highway gets moved over to fill in on that, but the budget itself is for two full-time employees. Things are pretty standard in this until you get down to the 15, 10, 30, 53, which is the solid waste removal line item. And I will tell you that I spent a lot of time on this line item. We, there are a lot of items included in this line item, and when I started to prepare the budget, it, the numbers that I was looking at that were budgeted last year didn't match what we were spending in areas, so I went back two years, and I pulled the vendor invoices from all of the people, all of the costs under this, to determine tonnages and trips and all those kind of things, so that I would have a really good idea of, of what our, and the answer is that I budgeted 245,000 and calculated about 237,000, so I've left a small amount of, she really made a mistake here, but, or we're going to get abzillion more tons than we used to, which we won't, but I'm confident that all of the items, which includes solid, the perk tip fees, wood transportation costs, demo tip fees, demo trucking, solid waste hauling, ash disposal, free-on removal, solid waste stickers, our DEP license for that, the disposal of shingles and gypsum board and that type of thing, and then the transportation for those as well. All of those items are what comes under that, and the total calculated based on the past several years of usage is 236,650. I budgeted 245,000 to make sure that there was enough if there was some anomaly, but the transfer station with a budget of $357,000 is, the transfer station budget back in 2007 was $480,000, and it's 357,000 now, and the town has made a lot, and that's even doing three days a week, the three-day, we modified our collection weekends to include Fridays, and, and that still has, we're still staying with that, in that, so for a community of 7,300 people, give or take, a solid waste or transfer station operation budget of 357,000, when we receive approximately $80,000 in rebates from the perk facility because of the 2018 contract and favorable electric rates, more money on top of that, approximately $13,000 for metal recycling, and, which is in addition to, because that wasn't part of zero sort, and then the cost of the transfer station fees, and your well, you're, you're close to $200,000 for a solid waste, your trash disposal costs, and that's exceptionally good, for a community, especially one who accepts virtually everything without a fee base or a forced paper bag or any of those kind of things, so this is a budget that, that councils over a number of years now have worked really hard on to try and control costs, so...
Counselor Shakespeare?
So help me out here, Sue, I'm a little confused. We were talking before about the municipal garage and the electricity, and we included the Packer in it, right?
The what?
The Packer, you know, recycle, and now we're talking about solid waste electricity.
Mm-hmm.
What's the difference between, isn't the Packer in the solid wa, do they have a separate demand meter, or?
They have a separate, they're separate metered, and the Packer's meter is tied into the public works garage because the, it's not tied into the same one as the other one, so it's driving up the cost of the town garage electricity.
But the solid waste electricity has gone up in almost $400, why, I mean, has rates gone up enough to?
It hasn't gone up that much, it was that much, expended through 2013, 14. It was not budgeted at that in 2014, 15, but it was expended at that rate. It should have been budgeted higher last year than what it was.
For that pack?
And so I'm catching up with it this year.
Okay, yeah, but that Packer is on...
The Packer's only been in since July 1st of 2014.
Why did they put that on, on the, on the municipal garage electricity rather than, I, I'm just curious, why, why they wired it that way, do you know?
I don't know.
Maybe because the other one wouldn't hold, hold the load or something, I don't know.
Counselor Marble?
First, as a comment, I just want to echo what you've said. I, I know enough about other budgets and other towns that this reflects very well and reflects a lot of work on a lot of people over the last few years. Basic question, I think you just said that the Packer's been online since July 1st last year, so you've had, by math, 10 months roughly of zero sort with the new Packer? There were other variables you mentioned, metal recycling was one, there were some others, but is that one of the reasons you're being a little cautious with leaving a cushion in there when you figured the cost's lower, partly because it's new?
Well, no, actually, to be honest, it isn't, it's because calculating based on actual uses over the past couple of years leaves you nowhere to go if, if something happens, that something goes down for a period of time, or where, and I, that would, it shouldn't be unrecoverable, and that, but that small, a cushion should be enough to offset anything that...
Thank you.
...happen of that nature.
Counselor McAvoy?
On the free-on removal, does that mean we have, we pay a licensed individual to come in and extract the free-on before we throw the appliances away, is that what that is?
That's exactly what it is.
Okay.
Yes, we have a, a person who's licensed to, for free-on removal and does that so that we can then legally dispose of them.
And we don't, we don't charge anybody, anything extra for that?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do? Okay, I was curious about that.
We charge $15 for a refrigerator, an air conditioner, anything that contains free-on or the, that substance that has to be removed prior to, and there, we have red stickers that we sell here at the town office for disposing of those items. That's the only item that there's a separate charge for.
Right, so, so now that the TVs or CRTs or anything like that don't have any, they don't, they're not considered a hazardous, or they contain hazardous materials, but they haven't got so far as charges for them yet?
There are, once upon a time, it was very difficult to get rid of that kind of thing, and now there's a lot of recycling that goes on where people, entities, companies take those, and, and we have one that takes ours.
Okay, thank you.
Do we find that the income on the red stickers equals the outflow on our free-on removal charges?
That, that's what we charge, we charge our...
I know.
Actually, the, the, we're charged a set fee per...
$15, basically, yeah.
That's correct, and that's what we're paying for the...
Well, my question is, have, have we found that any of the public are slipping any items in there that, without getting a sticker? No?
I've not had any reports of...
No, okay.
You know, hard to get a air conditioner or a refrigerator by somebody.
Well, not, not, not really, not there, not there, because it's, it's real busy, and if one guy's in the shack pushing buttons, another guy someplace else, people can back up quickly, unload an air conditioner, and drive off, and...
Oh, we, we, I've not had any reports of that.
I mean, it's no, no big deal, it wouldn't be any big money, but, you know, I was just wondering if it does happen.
Well, interestingly enough, we, we started charging these things because we used to have, we used to have more appliances and...
Oh, yeah, I got...
...disposed of than we had people in hand.
Oh, yeah, a guy drive, drive up with a pickup with six refrigerators on the back of his pickup, and, oh, he's from Bangor.
That was it.
There you go.
Do you happen to have the number of how much it cost us in wood transportation last year?
Not on me because we don't do it anymore. Oh, the, the wood transport, okay, wait a minute.
Not the fee, the trucking.
Sorry. Wood transport, $5,400.
That's it?
No, no, that's the, that's brush?
$90 a load.
Yeah, is that brush?
Yes.
Yeah, because all the other wood goes into household debris, I believe, yeah.
Sue?
Yes.
Is there a need for two full-timers?
Yes, yes, we, if they're...
I'm not saying we need one full-timer, but my thought is the busiest days are Saturdays and Sundays, could be operated with a part-timer on the weekends and a full-timer during the week. I'm just throwing it out.
We, we reduced by a half-person when we went to zero sort, from, from two full-time people and a half, another half-time person who did weekend coverage and the big weekends, the second and fourth weekends, and when we went to zero sort, because of the, there was no longer the need for somebody to be doing all that stuff, we reduced, we eliminated that part-time person, and so that is, I, I would not recommend that, put this down. I, I mean, when your public works director evaluates the operation, that's, that's attached to the garage... to the garage, it's part of his operation. But I, I think it would be, I don't think it would work well.
And what hap- happened is, we had a loose situation two weekends ago, I guess it was, I guess you corrected that probably, where we were, only had one full-time individual on a Sunday afternoon. And it was crazy out there, very dangerous, and I made note of it. But one of those full-time people, and like I say, there's, Sue says there's two, one of them, if he isn't needed during the week, I, I, I mean, he, he was mowing grass in one of the cemeteries. So, he is, he isn't just standing around not doing anything. He's utilized someplace else if he's not needed there by the town.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to buildings and grounds.
Okay, buildings and grounds is comprised of three people who spend twenty-two weeks of the year doing buildings and grounds-related activities. They're, the rest of the time, they're in public works. But they're all part of that same eleven-person number for full timers. These aren't, three of them do building and grounds. Two do it some parts of the week during the year. One of them is a dedicated zero-turn mower guy, forty hours a week pretty much in the summer. And then there are part timers that are budgeted for under the current, when you decided not to go forward with putting cemeteries out to bid, that we left it the way it was. And that's the way it's budgeted this year, that same way. That said, the, your evaluation of how this all works will determine how much or how little of that, those funds that you use, for example, of any part-time people. But the, the costs here are primarily personnel. And those that are not, maps and markers are the, some of them are, are related to providing markers for veterans' graves. We're required to provide those under the law. The VFW puts flags out. We pay for flags. We pay for markers. There's a water bill for the water at the cemetery expenses, really, the Memorial Day is, the, the town has, generally gives a small donation to the VFW for that, of a hundred and seventy-five dollars for that day. There are some sites where dedicated flowers go that we purchase on an annual basis. But the primary, primary cost here are personnel and its maintenance related for grounds, but also work that they do, time that they spend fixing something here, fixing something at the pool or at the library or whatever. Their, the buildings that are maintained are, are not just cemeteries and fields. The buildings, the grounds are the grounds here, the grounds at the pool, grounds at the library, the grounds at the public works department and mowing and, and trimming at the ski-in center as well, which is also part of our contract.
How come there's no retirement on, is that?
The retirement under the full-time wages here is budgeted under public works.
It is, okay.
Splitting it out is.
I was just wondering why their wages are here, but yet.
It's wages and FICA is there, but the benefits are paid out of the public works budget for the full-time people.
Council McAvoy?
This isn't specific to this here, but it just, so I don't forget it. At some point, will we be talking about our retirement obligations that we have and, you know, what we have and how it's funded and all that stuff? Okay, thanks.
Council Marvel?
Yeah, two light questions. I'm intrigued, what is the cost for water? What does that mean?
The, the Hampden Water District charges us for water.
Oh, okay. My simple brain goes, you turn the tap and there's, you know, okay.
Well, since it's a separate legal entity, we're just a customer.
Okay. Makes sense. And building repairs?
The.
Any of the buildings you just mentioned?
No, the, the buildings in the cemeteries.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to non-departmental utilities.
A number of years ago, and it's got to be ten now, the council decided that it would pull out of police and fire and some other budgets, things that were really utilities for the town. Streetlights and the repair of streetlights, hydrant rental, which is a misnomer. It's the thirty percent of the Hampden Water District budget that the town is required by law to pay. And that thirty percent is based on the fact that, that water delivery system in Hampden is designed larger than it would need to be to just provide water to people for drinking. It's provided, it's constructed to be large enough so that people can still get drinking water if there's a fire being fought, a, a big draw on the system in that. It's a capacity difference that the PUC regulates and has determined that thirty percent of the cost of their budget is ours for, and they call it hydrant rental because it's the capacity for fire prevention within that district. The, that's the biggest number in this, but it's four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars. And it's been that since eleven-twelve. We've not had any rate increases from the Water District since that time. And they have not anticipated having one in, in this coming year. The following year with Bangor's water going up, I'm thinking they probably will have to have one. But for the coming year, our, when they have a, a water increase, it's a big hit to us because thirty percent of the total cost of their budget is a substantial number. Streetlights is exactly what it says, is the streetlight bills for the, for the town. The streetlight repair is the repair, it's really traffic signal repair. We have one down, that's down at the intersection of Route One A and Western Avenue, that's the town's. The city of Bangor maintains it if their, their electric department and charges us for that. We have a, a signal light up at the end of Kennebec Road that's also the town's. This light out here is not ours. That's DOT's light. So, we don't have to pay for costs of repair to that facility. Although, it's always interesting when something happens, the bills start going in different directions until we remind them that we don't own that one. So, we don't have to fix it. And crosswalk, sidewalk is striping for crosswalks on an annual basis. And the, these are the, the items that are, are part of this non-department utilities.
Council McAvoy?
The streetlight issue is, I find irritating, to say the least. The, I, I know we, we pay a mirror, I, I, it probably averages, what, fifteen, twenty bucks a month per light somewhere in that neighborhood? Well, they have absolutely no incentive at all to convert to LEDs.
We have asked about that.
Right.
And when we had new ones installed and they're.
Right, why, why should they? Why, they, they have no incentive to do so because they can charge us whatever they want. And, and we have no ability apparently to force them to do anything or, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking into this because there are other communities out there that have done this, you know, that have converted at their own expense. Then the battle becomes, well, we don't, Americans say, well, we don't care that you're only using two dollars' worth of electricity. We're still going to charge you twenty bucks. So, but it's just, you know, something that needs to be done, or at least at some point.
Some communities have gone to the, the effort of, of owning them.
Yes.
And there's been a lot of research done as to whether or not that, in the long run, is in your best interest or not. But certainly moving forward, that it, it's a subject that the council, as, as I said in a number of communities, and some in Maine have done a lot of research on this subject.
Right, I, I did too, about two years ago, I looked at a lot of the stuff. Like I said, the, the problem is, a mirror doesn't care. They'll let you put up all the streetlights you want. But their, their tariff says, we're going to charge you fif- whatever it is, fifteen bucks a month, no matter what it is, you know? And, and they're free of any repair responsibilities or anything. They still.
So, so it's fifteen dollars a month for every streetlight for the electric?
I don't have the.
Generally speaking, generally, I'm just saying, generally speaking.
Probably close.
And they charge us only for the electricity, not for?
That's correct.
So, they say, okay? Fifteen dollars a month. Well, I can tell you, that streetlight, the cost of that, especially if it was LED, would amaze you, okay? Never mind the cost of, of installing the light of, even though I don't think they maintain them very well. Some of them, the electric eyes and the bulbs and on and off, on and off. But if you were to hire a private contractor with a proper lift truck that could go up near that high voltage line, you'd be paying substantially more than that. So, you know, but I agree, I agree that, you know, we have no control over that. And like they have a little monopoly. But it costs us eight hundred dollars a year just to get the Christmas lights, Christmas wreaths put up and taken down with a bucket truck.
That's because you have to hire a professional to do it.
Well, somebody with a lift, yeah.
Licensed.
I'm a professional, you might say. I put the flags up on that pole, Tom Brand and I, for an hour and a half it took us. And with my truck and my, my ladder, but not up near the high voltage line, so.
Council Marvel?
I won't pretend that I fully understood that hydrant rental isn't hydrant rental. I do understand about the overcapacity. But my question was sparked when you mentioned realistically, future rate increases. And so, without even being able to word the question well, the one I'll attempt to ask is, is there a doable, safe, reasonable discussion to be held at some point about being a little less overcapacity to mitigate the cost of future rate increases?
The, the system is already designed, and anything that gets added to it is a similar design. There's, that's the explanation for what justifies the thirty percent. However, what it really is, is the maximum percent that the PUC allows the Water District to charge the town for, for that service or that, that excess capacity. I, I mean, it wouldn't matter if we shut off, if you took out every hydrant in town. It's, we're not renting anything. We're paying a third of the cost, thirty percent of the cost of the Water District's budget. That's it. Or do we?
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to municipal building.
As I explained not too long ago, when we were talking about cleaning here at the town office, we went from a part-time cleaning person whose wages were split between here and the library to a cleaning service and, which is where we are today. The, what's listed as office supplies or is not office supplies, it's, it's supplies related to cleaning the building and that, that kind of thing. The telephone is because we have to have a telephone in the elevator that we have in the back here. And that's the cost of maintaining that phone line. It's, it's required by law. I can't get rid of it, but that's that. Considering that the elevator's used primarily by the people who do, who come to get document shredding things, they use it because they have a big blue container. And the election worker ladies use it when they come to go out back and they come from the back parking lot to go do it. And I think the, and, and we have it tested every month, so it gets used then, but it's because of the fact that it's a two-story public building and has to have one, it has to have a telephone. Electricity is the total cost for electricity for this building. If LED were installed or as replacement in fixtures, that, that number could come down. It's not in here that it is, but, but that's it. The change in the fuel budget is because the difference in what was estimated as a cost per gallon last year and this year is substantial. And our, our oil price per gallon for the coming year is two-eighteen-eight. And that is substantially lower than what we had budgeted last year. And it also includes five hundred gallons of propane for the generator out here. And that again is at a seventy-five cent per gallon less than what we had the year before. The water bill is the cost of, of not only the running water here, but the, the water that we have in the bank, back and that serves the fire department and the police department. Equipment service contracts is an annual elevator inspection fee, the main fire protection annual inspection fees, the elevator maintenance contract, and our mechanical services annual contract on our boilers. Building maintenance is a pest control program, obviously not for grubs, if you've seen out front, but other pests. The cleaning service, estimates of repairs to heating, lighting, air handling, et cetera, is estimated at five hundred dollars a month. And therefore, six thousand dollars of that, eighteen thousand seven is that estimation. And we spend that and sometimes more. This is a building that's two different ages. This side is nineteen ninety and that side is two thousand two. We have backflow inspections that are required on our, on the, our, some of our water connections, replacements for the flags out front, licensing of our boilers, and then stripping and waxing the floors in the, this part of the building, which we now don't have to do in the back part of the building because if you've been out there, it looks, the, the polished concrete was a great addition. So, that's, this is the cost of. the expense of this building is what this budget is.
Council Marble?
It's honestly, with the exception of another discussion, the only line, I'm going to say this about this year in the budget, is it feels to me that that last line may be a little low. And I have no objectivity or science to back it up, it's just the amount of this building and what we've been running through and water issues and leaks. You're talking cleaning, you're talking all the licensure and everything else you just mentioned. It just feels a little low to me. But if you're, if you're comfortable with it, I'll buy it.
Well, the general repairs that I'm talking about are not we lost, we lose a boiler or we, some big thing happens. Drainage issues to be fixed aren't internal to this building and are done by public works externally out here as part of their work program, so that's not. The floor repairs that we talked about are budgeted under reserve for the downstairs part of that, once we get the drainage done. So, that is who knows? It is a large building, there are many things that can go wrong, but traditionally the, we've, we've, in the past several years, taken some steps to do improvements to things. The boilers are relatively new, we received a, a grant from Efficiency Maine for the installation of those, so.
I was going to bring up that point that you just said, I mean, we just spent quite a bit of money on painting and, and the surface stuff out here. Brand-new floors out here, new boiler just six years ago, seven years ago. If something major comes up, I'd be surprised, but we do have reserves for that in case it does come up.
But that, but that's why we put a new boiler system in a number of years ago, voted for it, to reduce the cost of the fuel.
And, and we reduced our fuel usage at the time we did that by almost a third.
And also going to a four-day work week rather than having a five-day work week was
Closing this building, three day, this half of this building down for three days in a row, bringing computer systems, light, heat, everything to minimal. We estimated at that time that it saved us six to seven percent on the cost of heat, electricity, et cetera, at the time.
Any other?
I just, it, it just occurred to me that when I, when I looked at the, the dedicated phone line for seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents a month, man, what, I mean, all, all you need's a dial tone, I mean, it's not like you need anything on this. I can't imagine OTT or TDS or somebody wouldn't just give you a, a live phone.
I can't use voice over internet for that phone.
No, but, okay, but I mean, but
That is a, a hardwired phone from down the street, shall we say, that's
Right, but I mean, I, I find, TDS charges seventy-eight bucks a month for a basic business phone?
That, it, it's not just a basic
It's not just that?
It's got, there's an emergency, it, it dials an emergency number.
Automatically or something like that, okay.
You know, it's not just a dial tone, it's a
Oh, okay.
Hello, I'm stuck in the elevator and I can't get out.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I have a basic business phone at my house and it's fifty-six dollars a month. And it's not all the extras, like Sue said, they don't give it away.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess that would end up for tonight. We have a, can we?
Can we discuss before we leave, I don't know if we got to put it on the next agenda, but to replace, to go in reserves and replace this equipment?
I
Rather than wait until after the contract negotiations, which
If infrastructure wants to put this on their agenda for
Tuesday.
Tuesday night, you could have a recommendation for the council meeting on June first?
Perfect.
Is that, will that spark?
Any other comment? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor? Thank you very much.